Hello, hello. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And just for information, we will be following the agenda as published. Meaning we'll have a little bit of business than the agenda for the workshop with William Sweeney, our administration review, old business, and then we will continue with the Latizori public hearing at that time. And so therefore, I'm calling the meeting to order. We have Ryan Deasy, myself, Ben Filbrick, Chuck Sheehan, Lynn Conway, and Gary Belkey sitting in for Fred Dykman, who is not with us tonight. I have Bo and Marge Salinger, excuse me, it's Marge, as our alternate. There aren't any minutes for this evening, so we will postpone looking and reviewing them and approving them until next meeting. So, Mr. Sweeney, Attorney Sweeney, you are up to lead us in our workshop, please.
Yes. Can everybody hear me okay?
Perfect.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Bill Sweeney. I'm a land use attorney and a partner at the law firm at Tobin Carberry in New London, Connecticut. And as always, it's a real pleasure to be before you here tonight. I represent a company called EG Home LLC, which is a luxury home builder out of Southbury, Connecticut, which has requested this informal, non-binding workshop with your commission to discuss its possible acquisition and construction of the unbuilt but fully approved Crescent Club development to be located between Greenhaven and Mary Hall Roads in Pawtucket. Whatever we have to do to get this going, anyway. Joining me tonight, just a couple people I'd like to introduce, and you'll hear from some of them tonight. Matt Gilchrist and Chris Bennett are from EG Home. I also have Bill Fries, who is their civil engineer with BL Companies, who's here with us tonight as well. EG Home has entered into a contract with Terrenzia Excavation to purchase the Crescent Club project and is currently engaged in a due diligence process to determine whether they can modify approvals that this commission granted Terrenzia back in 2011. From what I understand, this project predates the members of the board right now. So I'm going to provide some very basic background for you. Terrenzia Excavation obtained re-subdivision and special permit approval from the commission, as I said, in 2011. The project was very controversial. It drew a lot of neighborhood opposition, and those approvals were subsequently modified by a court stipulated judgment after an appeal was taken. The final project that was approved by the court included seven single-family residential lots along Greenhaven and Mary Hall Road, and then a larger parcel in between the two roads with 64 attached multifamily units, along with some amenities. The original re-subdivision in the project plans dedicated over 30 acres of permanent open space, which is now held by the town or the Stonington Land Trust, despite the fact that the majority of the project itself was never actually built. And while those approvals are still valid and could still be exercised as quickly as tomorrow, EG Home is very interested in taking over the project and looking at reducing the overall density of the project, replacing the multifamily housing units with detached single-family homes within a common interest community. So our purpose tonight, and I'm going to have Matt Gilchrist come up in a second, is to share with you our vision for the development of the site and to ultimately seek your input on our proposal and whether your open space development regulations could be used as a zoning tool to modify the project that was approved and create what we think is a much more attractive and more neighborhood-compatible development. So with that, I'll have Matt come up, introduce himself and his company.
My name is Matt Gilchrist. I'm the president and co-owner of EG Home. I have a slideshow that doesn't want to move forward. So we'll do it the old-fashioned way. Some of you, I believe, were on the commission a few years back when I was, before you, getting Perkins Farm Town Homes, our site plan approved ironically with David Latizori that night. Sorry. Not sure why we're having technical difficulties. But EG Home is a Connecticut home builder. I started in 2013 with a business partner of mine from the United States Navy. We were young officers in the Navy together. We both served for 10 years and then kind of went our different ways. He went to grad school and I went to Toll Brothers and KB Home, and I learned the home building industry. After several years of doing that, I began, I met up with him, and we said, hey, let's start a different business together, and we created EG Home. We created EG Home with a single subdivision, which was Chatfield Farms. Chatfield Farms was an active adult town, an active adult community with 152 freestanding homes. I only have 18 more to sell now, what is that, eight, nine years later? And these homes are really the inspiration for the homes that we want to bring into Pawtucket. They're active adult, even though we're not seeking an active adult approval, we are seeking an age-targeted footprint and an age-targeted concept for these homes. So we're going to be bringing this type of architecture down, and we'll visit architecture later. Since 2013, we've grown from a company with four employees to a company with over 20 employees. Almost half of those have been added within the last year, year and a half. Last year, we closed 37 homes at $20 million in revenue. This year, we're over 60 with $30 million in revenue. Of those, those homes, 50 of them were the townhomes right here in Mystic at Perkins Farm. We are also the new developer on the Toll Brothers property, Old Mystic Estates. Toll Brothers is in the process of getting their, the roads dedicated, but we have already purchased 15 of their lots, and we're on contract to purchase the other 14. Good news is, we have a model home going up and three solid sales and two more in the hopper. So, you know, we love this town, we love this area, we're extremely grateful to have another opportunity to build in this town, and we think what we have, what we have planned is, is an improvement upon what was, what was approved. Why are we here tonight? Bill already alluded to this. We have a contract with, to purchase the Crescent Club development. It is shovel-ready, ready to go. We could go in and build those townhomes that they've already approved. We're interested in seeking new approvals for single-family freestanding homes, again, age-targeted. We believe that these new approvals are more in tune with the neighborhood and the lifestyle of the area. And in, in part of our due diligence, we actually met with all the abutters. We put out a announcement to all the abutters to the property. We rented a, a conference room at the Hilton, and we did this last Thursday night. We met with 12 couples, came, and we walked through all of our plans and what our vision for the property would be. We're very aware of how contentious this, this development was the first time it went through, and we tried to address all those issues. Honestly, the, the issues that they came back to us with that night were, one, they're very concerned about traffic on their road, so the reduction in density is going to help with that, but they also were looking for some support and maybe some traffic control measures like extra stop signs and that kind of stuff. And two, the, they had the same concerns about blasting and that type of, that type of development in their backyard. I don't know if you're all familiar, but there were stipulated agreements and neighborhood agreements and appeals and lawsuits all attached to this development. We're prepared to honor all of the germane portions of those agreements and to even take it a step further, and we explained it to everybody in that room. Lots of people were left out of those agreements. Everything that we, we want to do and agree to do is going to be in the approvals, on the plan, 100% transparent to everybody in that community. And that really struck a chord with everybody who we met with. They were extremely happy with that, and we explained how the pre, you know, blasting goes and how the post-blasting goes and any mitigation plans. So they were very reassured by that, and they were all obviously very happy seeing a reduction in density. And, you know, when you see, we're going to review architecture later, and you'll see why they were so much happier with what we proposed. So tonight, we're here to look for a way to navigate the prior approvals and find a clear path forward for what I believe will be a better development. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Bill Fries. I'm going to troubleshoot this for like two seconds while he comes up, and he's going to walk you through the, the plans. Go ahead. I'll just...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Bill Fries. I'm a senior manager with BL Companies, offices in Meriden and Hartford, Connecticut. I'd like to orientate you guys through the plan here. On the left, and actually it's the north, and I apologize, the north there, I was kind of pointing down to the right there. So on the, on the right side is Mary Hall Road, and then to the southwest is, is Greenhaven Road. The property in question is, is in the middle there with a couple parcels that we'll get to in a couple slides here, but there are a couple of open space parcels that were deeded to the land trust, and then there was one parcel in the middle that was actually deeded to the town as open space. There we go. Oh, perfect.
So, advance is the big button.
Thank you, sir. Let me go back. Okay. So the plan that, that's represented on the screen right here is the original approval that was, that was approved. There are, let me just, there are four lots off of Mary Hall Road that were previously approved as single, single-family lots, and then another seven on Greenhaven Road, which all of those, it's 11 single-family lots, and then in the middle of the property, I'm not sure if you guys can see this, I apologize, is 14, or I'm sorry, 16 four-unit homes that are multifamily homes, which equal 64 total units. So the total approval was 75 lots for this. The four on Mary Hall Road have already been sold, and so the remainder is the 64 in the middle, and then the, the four, I'm sorry, the seven off of Greenhaven. All of the utilities are, are located in Mary Hall, and they would maintain for both this layout and then also the, the proposed layout off of Mary Hall Road, and then we'll come in, that is water, sewer, and electric. There are some stormwater basins, there's one located here, and then there's another larger one here. Those will be maintained as part of the proposed layout and modified as needed. As we, as we show you the, the proposed lot now, as you could see, single-family, more conducive to the area, and also is going to allow us to have less disturbance when we go in there and start grading. As you know, with the, with the 16 larger footprints, you have to grade that out almost as a flat path, so you're, you're doing a lot of grading. Where with the 47 or so, single-family, it allows us to be a little more flexible and also reduce that disturbance. Again, the utilities will be the same, coming in off of Mary Hall, and the, and the two curb cuts will remain the same, one off of Mary Hall and one off of Greenhaven at the top. The picture to the left represents an amenities area, which would be a, an area where the residents can go meet, you know, have, have little picnics, have a little meet and greets there, but it's, it's a nice little amenity added to the, to the community. So the next plan we're showing is the open space calculation. So the, the property located in, in orange, in the upper right corner there, that was land that was deeded to the town already. And then the two parcels in the back at the cyan color, those were two areas that were, they're open space to the land trust. And then the gray hatched areas are areas that we would, there would be additional open space areas that we would look to, to add to that. And right now, if we count the cyan area and then the bigger parcel area, you'd be looking at the high 60s for a percentage of open space.
I had a quick question going back, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Where is most of the blasting taking place?
So the, the rockout crops are, I apologize, there's...
In the Terrenzia drawing, I couldn't quite...
This area here.
Okay.
And then again, a little bit in this area here.
So I was just curious, who is most impacted? The houses that are already on Mary Hall and the, and communities to the east?
Correct, yeah. And then there would be a, there'd be a radius map, as part of the approvals, there was a pre-blast survey and all that, so it would be projected out from those areas.
Okay.
Those would be the...
Thank you.
Yep. No problem. And so this plan here represents the overlay of the new layout onto the old, and as you could see, the, the roads are somewhat in the same location, but the footprints, the biggest key is the footprints get pulled in. So what happens is your grading would be less, and again, because of these footprints, they're single-family, smaller units, you're, you have more flexibility for grading and less of a big area to grade out of flat path.
And just the one curb cut on Greenhaven?
Correct. There's, there's one on Greenhaven, a full up, yeah, in the upper left there.
Rather than the four or five houses that were there before?
Correct.
Which each...
Yep, yep, those, and then there's one, yeah, down on Mary Hall.
Greenhaven.
Yep. And I can turn it over to Chris Bennett to talk a little bit about the architecture. Perfect. I'll turn it over to Matt.
So, architecture is the key to any, any project, and this is what was approved. Again, it was 16 large buildings, huge footprint. This footprint really required them, as Bill was saying, to cut one half of the job and fill the other half of the job, to create these large, flat building lots. There are four attached homes, two-bedroom homes, one-car garage. I, when I looked at this plan and I look at these, I look at these, the plans for the houses and the plans for the development, it looks like it wanted to be a rental development, which to me screams transient, more turnover, and a lower price point. Even if these were sold, like I comped the, the, this product out, these floor plans out, and I see these houses selling, you know, for, you know, the low threes, maybe high twos for some of the smaller and middle units. This is what we want to do. You know, we are a production home builder. This is what we specialize in. This is an age-targeted product. We're going to bring in five different homes with four, with three or four different elevations for each home. Every home gets its own colors and textures between shakes, board and batten, clavoured and stone. These, again, single-family homes, 1,800 to 2,600 square feet, two and three-bedroom, two and three-car garages, proven award-winning designs. We've won numerous state awards for, for the homes at Chatfield Farms, and all these homes are going to be Energy Star certified. So what that says is, you know, we're, we're, every single home will be inspected by a third party and receive that accreditation. And furthermore, we're actually looking to partner with a major solar supplier and, and offer solar standard in this community. So you can see the exterior of these homes, they're 42 feet wide, they're between 50 and 60 feet deep, there's lots of different elevation changes, lots of different textures, there's front porches, there's, you know, nice carriage-style garage doors. And what these homes at 42 feet apart, at 42 feet wide and 20 feet apart allow us to do is, we can actually now have some, some flow to the land. We can have a neighborhood feel, not a pancake in the middle of the woods in a, in an already established neighborhood. So this is going to feel and live like the rest of the people that already live there. So this is some of our interiors, you know, right on trend. Chris Bennett would tell me that I need to mention that we're going to, there's a lot more stained cabinets coming back. So if you're about to replace your white cabinet, your stained cabinets for white cabinets, hold on, because your stained cabinets are coming back in style. And at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Bill, and he's going to walk you through, unless there's any questions for Matt.
Any questions by the commission? Thank you.
Can you put it back to our design slide where we show what we want to build? So, obviously, one of the purposes of tonight was to share with you our idea, to get some feedback, but the other one was really to get some direction and interpretation from you on your regulations. As we said before, of the original Crescent Club development, only the four lots, the four single-family lots on Mary Hall Road have actually been built and conveyed. The rest of the land is vacant, still owned by Terrenzia, it's never been built out. The changes that we are seeking would require us to go back and modify the re-subdivision from 2011 and to apply for it a new special permit to change the nature of this project from really a multifamily one to strictly single-family detached. And as you can see on this plan, you know, our plan is to have those single-family homes in a common interest community, so they wouldn't be on individual lots, they'd be on a single lot, very much like common interest communities are throughout the state of Connecticut. Now, what's interesting is in your zoning regulations, this is, the underlying zoning here is RM 20, and single-family residences are allowed, are permitted as a right within this district. However, the language of your zoning regulations for the RM 20 and all your other residential districts limits a property owner to one single-family residence on a lot. You can't have more than one. And that's sort of ironic and somewhat frustrating, because under the same regulation, you can come before this board and get a special permit to do multifamily housing on the same lot, but you can't do multiple single-family detached. And so that puts us in a bind on how to make this project work, how to twist or modify this project so you could do a project that fits more in line with the surrounding neighborhood. So what we did is, we looked at your existing regulations, rather than trying to rewrite a new regulations, looked at your existing regulations and to see if, is there an approach that we could take? And we did locate one, we identified one. And what we've been exploring with your staff and with the town attorney would be to use your open space development or your OSD regulations, which are codified in 6.6.22 of your regulations, to allow us to do this type of, of a project. That regulation is somewhat, it has not been used very often in the town, certainly not, this wouldn't be the first time it's been used, but it's been very, used very sparingly. But what it does allow someone to do is, in a, in a qualifying district, and the RM 20 allows open space development by special permit, you can do multiple single-family homes as part of common interest community. That's exactly what we want to do. And so we explored with your staff and with your town attorney, the ability to come in and modify the approvals and seek a new special permit for this central section of the site to do single-family detached housing. When we, we're going through the regulations with the town planner, one of the things we identified, however, though, is that Section 6.622.5 requires a dedication of open space, a dedication of at least 50% of the project area must be put into permanent open space. And we've got a somewhat unusual and unique situation here, because we have a project that was approved a decade ago that hasn't moved forward, but the dedication of open space has happened. Can you move forward to the open space slide? One more. Excellent. So the cyan and the orange areas have already been given to the, to the Stonington Land Trust and the town respectively, even though the rest of the project hasn't actually been developed. To use the OSD regulations and to get to that 50% land requirement, we need to be able to count the land that was originally dedicated as part of the Crescent Club multifamily project. So what we did is, we went back to Section 6.6.22.5, we looked at that section, and that section doesn't specifically or explicitly consider the fact that you may have dedicated your open space prior to application. But what, from our perspective, it certainly makes, it's certainly reasonable and it makes sense to interpret the provision in a manner that would allow an applicant who has a project like Crescent Club, who's already dedicated the space, to come back before the commission, apply for an open space development, and get credit for the land that's already been put aside to, to the modified design. And I think it's telling that while your zoning regulations, the open space regulations don't explicitly talk about this situation, your subdivision regulations do. Your subdivision regulations, remember, this project was originally approved as part of a re-subdivision, make clear to the commission that it must give credit to previously dedicated open space in terms of both subdivision and re-subdivisions. You can't ask for it twice if you come in and modify a plan. And so we believe, looking at your regulations in total, that it follows that if you came in for an open space development to modify the plan, this commission should give credit so that we can at least be eligible to apply for an open space development. Now, we've discussed that interpretation with your town planner. He agrees that it's fair and reasonable in light of all the circumstances. We also met with Attorney Laundergin, your town council, went through the situation, the previous approvals. I know that your town planner wrote a memo to Attorney Laundergin, and I know Attorney Laundergin has responded back, I think with a memo today, agreeing with our position that it's a very reasonable interpretation of the regulations. But as you know, and I've said this to you before in other hearings, at the, at the end of the day, the commission is the ultimate arbitrator of what its, its regulations mean. And so, obviously, tonight, we're here to hear your comments, suggestions, thoughts on our proposal, but what we really need from you is direction. We need a determination from you tonight, whether in fact we can use the blue area specifically, because that will give us the amount of land we need to get to the 50%, and actually quite a bit above 50% will be, as Mr. Fries testified, will be close to 70% of the site will be open space. Can we use that land that was dedicated in 2011? Can we use that for an open space development? If so, we can then proceed with the engineering and the design. We'll probably back to you for another workshop to show you where we're headed and as we get those details, but we think that this project is, would be a dramatic improvement over what we're doing. And, you know, as Mr. Gilchrist said, we've met with the neighbors and they've given some really positive feedback. I think this would be good for the community to have this type of a project here, but we need your help tonight and hope that you would agree with us and your town attorney and your town planner that we can apply under the OSD. So thank you so much for your time tonight. We're available if you have any questions. We can go through architecture, we can go through regulation, however you want to do it, but we're here for you as well.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Just a quick question, and only, only if you, your analysis has gone this far. Considering the, I'll call it blue, because...
Yes.
Yeah, I've never heard of cyan before.
Your palette is much more sophisticated than mine. And the, and the brown area up there, and the gray area that you've gotten proposed, is that, would that give us as much open space under this proposal as what was approved under the previous proposal?
More, because the gray areas on that land are not designated as open space right now.
Under the original?
On the original plan, correct.
How much of that open space is, is used for detention area?
The area in the sort of upper right has a detention basin in the center of it, but it's a detention basin that we would intend to plant with wetland plantings to enhance habitat. So certainly, the commission, if you look at the OSD regulations, has the right to consider whether the uses proposed within the open space actually meet the purpose and intent. We think we can make an argument to that extent, but certainly, if you include all the gray area, at the end of the day, if we are able to move forward, there will be more protected open space under our plan than the approved plan.
Some of the things that would be important to me in the future design is, is the stormwater impact of this less, it would seem that it would be much less? Is the, is the impact on, this is at the far reaches of the, the Westerly Water System, at the absolute end of the Westerly Water System. There are issues with fire suppression and fire flow out here.
Sure.
It would seem to me that there were some positive benefits for that as well. And also on sewer impact, you know, in terms of, of the flow from this versus, you know, a higher-density project. So, so those three areas, if you don't have to, you don't have to answer any of these questions, they're not really...
But I can tell you, we've already looked, because, you know, when you're looking at a project like this, you want to be, be very careful with, with your... when you're looking at a project like this, you want to be, be very careful with, with your performa to understand the costs. And we believe that the conversion of the project shifting away from multifamily to single-family will reduce overall footprint, reduce impervious surface, reduce infrastructure. And then along your lines, reduce the service needs for the project as well. And remember, there's a big density decrease. The original project had 70 housing units. This has significantly less than that. And, and, and I think, at the end of the day, I think this is a win-win for everybody involved. But we've got to get through your regulations and your regulatory framework to make it happen.
And then finally, the major category of traffic. It would seem like with less density, it would be less traffic. But you know, you're comparing, you're comparing a multifamily to a single family, and I think I'd leave it to the traffic engineers to ultimately tell us, is the traffic, in fact, less and does it contribute at periods that are perhaps, you know, different from what a multifamily project would contribute?
You'd be required...
Traffic was a huge issue previously.
Yep.
And, you know, what impact does shifting to single-family and reducing the density have? Seemed to be a layup that it would be less, but...
Yeah, but we have to, we have to verify that through an actual traffic report that meets the requirements of your regulations, which we will do. The other thing, though, and I, I, I hope that you heard, one of the things that we heard from some of the neighbors was a request for us to examine the ability to do off-site improvements, particularly with signage and intersections. And it may not have been part of the original approval. There were issues that were brought to us by the neighbors that we're willing to look at. Obviously, these roads are within the jurisdiction of the police commission. But certainly, we think some of the ideas that we heard at the neighborhood meeting, particularly along Greenhaven Road and the intersection, and having a four-way stop potentially, I think are really important. And we would absolutely adopt them and pay the costs for those upgrades as well. And that would be an additional improvement over the existing approvals.
And I guess as a final comment, the detention basin, which occupies a large portion of, of the open space, not the majority, but a large portion of it, to me would, would be more, it, it more fits the definition of open space and the purpose of open space if it's a dry basin and not a wet basin. That would mean that there would be a low-flow channel through it. It would be dry except in periods of, of peak flow from the stormwater management system on site. And, and essentially maintain, it's like a grassed area, available for stormwater storage, but not inundated in other, any other periods of time.
I've certainly, in, in my 20 years plus doing this, I know exactly what you're talking about. It's a design issue. I know Mr. Frye is taking notes back there. But that's the type of, it does not make sense for us to spend the money on engineering at that level until we can get past this issue before us. But that's the kind of issue when we come back to you with a new special permit. We have to answer, we have to make you happy with in terms of stormwater.
Thank you. Those, those are my issues, so, and not really issues, just advice for what I feel...
Those are great comments, that's exactly what we're looking for from tonight.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Whole bunch of papers here. So the, the blue was the original open space. When you're thinking about reconfiguring the development, did you think about building on the space that was already designated and kind of change up everything?
Yeah, that would be really difficult because it's actually transferred in title to a third party. So it's actually been dedicated and given to Stonington Land Trust. A lot of that land is wetland as well, or a sensitive habitat area. So no, the answer to your question is, we did not do that. What we did was take the open space lands because they were already dedicated, and they're off the table for actual development. When we get into the OSD, you'll, and if you're not familiar with the OSD, there is something called the conceptual yield plan, where you have to lay out what a conventional subdivision would be. And so those areas are absolutely used. You can't build in wetlands, though. But those areas are used for, for the conceptual yield plan. But we would never build in them, and we can't really. They're dedicated to those land trusts with conservation restrictions already.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then just, just, I, I was writing down numbers while you were talking. You said there was a total decrease in the number of housing units. So the original was 70. You, you've built four. But you said with this proposal, there'd be a de, a total decrease.
Right.
What's the total number here?
The plan there shows 47 units.
Forty-seven, okay.
Plus three single-family lots still on Greenhaven Road. So that's 50.
Fifty versus 70, okay, great, thank you.
But I, I want to say that this is a concept plan and it might not be that number. I don't think it's going to go up, it might go down, but it's going to be around that number.
Okay, great, thank you.
You might add, the original was 75.
Seventy-five.
So there was, yeah, there was four lots on Mary Hall, and then there's 11 single-family, you know, on Greenhaven, and then there were 64 units in the middle, so 75, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one quick modification, the detention basin is the L down in the lower left corner. The upper right is a, is a wetland here.
Just one more point. I'm sorry, go ahead, Brian.
Covered my question for around the traffic regulations. It seems like you've already taken steps to start addressing that.
Sure. Yeah, and, and if we can get some positive feedback from you tonight on the interpretation, I expect we'll be here before you again to show you progress on where we are with the design. And when we have that additional level of engineering so that we can show you and get some additional comments. I think some of you know, I'd like to try to work my projects here in town as a partnership to the extent I can. So I certainly want to get feedback from you guys if we're going in the wrong direction or if there's things you want us to do.
One more?
Just, just a point. I've heard the developer talk about how he approached the neighbors, and I, I think it's, it's a very good idea. And, and I applaud. And particularly in light of the fact that the last approval was very contentious. You know, dealing with that head-on and, you know, being concerned with the neighbors, it's nothing we can require, but, but I think it's admirable, and I think we should commend it.
We, we thought the same.
Getting to the crux of the matter with Attorney Landrigan, be reading his letter twice today. I don't see any reason why we can't consider, in a favorable light, his suggestions.
Yeah, and again, you know, we're looking from you...
Do, do, and you disagree?
I guess my question would be, if we agree to pursue, how do we pursue the plans? Is this a recommendation to say to them, yes, would we proceed with the open space development?
What, what I would ask for is a vote from the, of the board saying that we agree with the interpretation that you can use previously dedicated open space. That gives us some level of comfort that we can go start spending money on engineering and not have that flipped around later down the road. So that's what I'm looking to, and, and the commission's done that periodically in the past when you get sort of those gray items in the regulations. And we met with your planner, he said, "Sounds reasonable, it seems like it should be." Met with the town attorney, said, "Yeah, but ultimately, it's your decision." And we're certainly not going to spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans if that's going to be a problem.
I would just look to Keith for a guidance on the exact wordage of the vote.
I think something along the lines of that you support the interpretation on the open space made by Attorney Sweeney as recommended by the town attorney.
It sounds simple enough to me.
Motion that we support the opinion of Attorney Landrigan, stipulated in his December 6, 2021 letter, that there be no need for further open space dedication of the proposed development.
Any discussion?
I, I think it's, it's just common sense logic.
Agreed.
One of the few things.
Yeah. One of the few, one of the few times you can answer this.
All those in favor?
Thank you so much for your time tonight. I know you have other matters on your agenda. Have a good evening. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Moving on to the administrative review items, item 5D. 5D121277ZON, Kalanish LLC, zoning permit application for a change of use from lobby to office. Property located at 11 Main Street, second floor, Area 1, Old Mystic. Assessor's map 166, block 3, lot 1, zone CS5. This application and the application after it are zoning permits for changes of use inside parts of the Old Mystic Mill on Main Street there. In this one, there is this vacant lobby space on the second floor. They're looking to do some changes in there to make that a little bit of extra office space. It's very small, only about 212 square feet. Office space is allowed in the CS5 zone. The mill was approved for various office and retail uses back in 1996. There's a lot of off park, off-site parking areas that were approved by the commission over the years. The fire marshal comments indicated he had no issues with this change. It doesn't require any extra space, any extra parking spaces because it's so small. Conforms to the bulk and use requirements of the CS5 zone. And the recommended stipulations here is, number one, approval is subject to the WPCA's moratorium on increasing flows to the Mystic Plant. And number two, just the clarifying one of this approval is limited to the conversion of an existing 212-square-foot lobby to office space with related interior renovations as shown on the plan titled Mystic Mill, proposed plans by QA and M Architecture, Sheet A1.3 dated April 30, 2021.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the application submitted with the two stipulations that Keith noted.
The two stipulations. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one, 21278ZON, Kalanish LLC, zoning permit application for a change of use from office to personal services. Property located at 11 Main Street. Assessor's map 166, block 3, lot 1, zone CS5. Similar to the last one, this is a 1,047-square-foot office space on the second floor of the mill. They're looking to convert that to a yoga studio, which we consider personal services and zoning. Some interior walls will be removed in there. Personal services are permitted in the CS5 zone. No issues with the fire marshal. No extra parking required. Conforms to the bulk and use requirements of the CS5 zone. And basically the same two stipulations, subject to the moratorium on the Mystic Plant. And this approval is limited to the conversion of existing office space to a yoga studio with related interior innovations in project area two, shown on Sheet A1.2 of the plan titled Mystic Mill by QA and M Architecture dated April 30, 2021.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application submitted with the two stipulations that Keith outlined.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
And item 5D3, 21287ZON, Tomato Investments LLC, zoning permit application for change of use from personal services to retail. Property located at 163 South Broad Street, Unit 3, Parketuck. Assessor's map 37, block 1, lot 4A, zone GC60. This is the shopping center that's next to the police station. There's an 800-square-foot hair salon that they're looking to convert to a retail convenience store. Lots of parking there. The proposed hours are from 8:00 in the morning to 10:00 PM. Signs will replace those that currently exist on the wall and in the multi-tenant detached sign. Conforms to the use and bulk requirements of the district. Recommended stipulation, just new signs shall not exceed the size of those being replaced and shall not be internally illuminated.
And it always seems like there's plenty of parking there, Keith, you said?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a big lot, yeah.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application submitted with the two stipulations that Keith outlined.
Two?
I thought he said two on the lighting?
Oh, it was all one.
Oh, all ones, okay. One stipulation, signage, yeah.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move.
And moving on to old business, item 6A, PZ2126 CAM, Joseph and Laurie LaRosa. Coastal area management site plan review application in response to Notice of Violation 2111 for construction of multiple retaining walls within the CAM foundry. Property located at 39 Lindbergh Road. Stonington, Assessor's map 129, block 1, lot 4, zoning RM 20. And Mr. Fettis is here to present this to the commission.
Good evening, my name's Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering. With an office at 70 Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut. With professional engineer license in the state of Connecticut, representing the LaRosas on this project. As Keith stated, there's three walls that were installed. They're called retaining walls, retaining slash landscaping. One was located in the front or water side of the house. It's about two feet in height, probably at its highest point on the back of the wall. Basically, the sand from the beach was basically filling up underneath the house. So they basically put the wall there to, to prevent additional sand and offer just like a slight protection. Adjacent properties to the west have walls that are much taller and closer to the, to the coastal resources. This one basically is at the edge of the existing house and basically just keeping the sand out from underneath the house or controlling it just a little bit. The second wall would be on the western, southwestern corner of the property. That's basically at grade. And then at the, it would be the north end of it, probably three feet. And that's basically just to retain the driveway. And then the, the last wall is an L-shaped wall located at the northeast corner of the property. And again, that's to retain and prevent erosion into the wetlands, but also retain the driveway for parking. These walls were all installed, they're all existing now. We do have a review by the staff that's in your, in your report. We did address, although it's not identified in here, there were comments by the town engineer. We addressed in a letter dated 11/8, which I'm not sure is in your file or not, that we responded to his comments and addressed those items, one through, one through five on his report. I can go through them. I don't know if that, did this get?
It's in the application file.
Okay.
The commission might not have seen that letter.
No, I don't believe we have.
I do only have one copy of it here.
But you are addressing his concerns?
Yeah, I can go through them quickly. He asked for a survey, when item one asked for a survey of the A2T2 accuracy levels, which we did supply that. His second item was make sure that we had dimensions, spot grades, limits of fill. Additionally, flood zone designation, coastal jurisdiction line should be illustrated on the plan as proposed or darker weight. We did add all of that information they requested. Number three, provide details illustrating the type, size, make, and dimensions of the wall components, footing or base, backfilling. We did add that right to the plan. Detail of the wall, dimensions and the length of the walls and the backfill material per detail. Item four, the site plan should be consistent with modifications as directed by DEEP. We did meet DEEP out several, or twice, I guess, on site. They did request that we remove some stone. Well, they first requested that we confirm the tidal wetland line. We had had it delineated by a soil scientist, David Lord. David Lord and myself met DEEP out there at the site and we did kind of go over and come to agreement on a new line, which is shown on the current plan.
How does that differ from the wall that's there now?
It was always outside the wall. It didn't, the wall didn't affect the tidal wetland.
The wall's in the border, within the border, it's not over the line?
It's not over the line.
And have you seen today's DEEP letter?
Yes, and I will get to that as soon as I finish this.
Thank you.
So we did meet with them, we came to agreement on the tidal wetland line. They had requested that we remove some of the fill. There's a pathway that runs this portion of big land modeled by my client, but it offered access to their property, but also offers access to the beach, association beach. Beyond the land, there was the apron and a little path that goes to the beach. They ended up on the apron, but they asked us to remove all of that down.
Excuse me, you'll have to use the microphone if you're going to be that detailed in your answer.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yep, no problem. So the apron as shown here on the plan, there was some crushed processed gravel as well as some crushed stone. They asked us to remove that down to native wetland soils or native, yeah, it's within the wetland boundary. We did that. They also asked that we remove a swath along the driveway down to wetland soil. We did remove that. And then there was a little bit along the wall that we did remove that also. We had sent pictures, I know there's comment in the report, staff report, that they're still looking for some photos. They did have the photos, so I had resent them earlier today to DEEP. So let me just make sure I got item four addressed here. So I believe we're in compliance with DEEP's request for information to be shown on the plan as well as the photographs at this point. Just to preemptively address time on this application. If the commission's not comfortable with making a decision tonight, we will grant an additional extension to the next meeting. Number five was a narrative requested, which we did add to the plan, just addressing impact on coastal wetlands or coastal resources with respect to flow diversion, wave reflection and wave run-up. This is as, and I'll get to the DEEP letter short next, but they, it is more of a landscape wall. It's, it's not tall enough to affect any of those items, wave runoff, deflection or anything like that. We're in a, I believe it's a VE 14 flood zone and we're tucking the walls at elevation, top of walls at 4.5, so any flooding will
Go right over it.
Be way over the top of it and it won't, it won't affect it. Let's see, the DEEP letter, today's DEEP letter. I think this is what requested some additional photographs, which they do have and have had. However, they're not acknowledging it in this letter, so again, if the commission, I will, we will grant an extension if necessary. But I think the bottom line of their letter is that they're not considered flood and erosion control structures because of the height and they're more functioning as landscape walls, not as flood and erosion control structures. They also, the, probably the, they do talk about the wall, the L-shaped wall being so close to the tidal wetlands and said the commission should determine whether that would be better protecting, left in place and better protecting the tidal wetlands than removing the wall and, and having, vehicles are going to park adjacent to it anyway. What, this, this area is very flat, therefore runoff and it's crushed stone. Stormwater will be limited for erosion control. But stormwater will not runoff in its current situation. If it was sloped, you may get some runoff. So I think the bottom line, that the wall in place, it's already constructed, DEEP doesn't necessarily have a, an issue with it being there. They're not going to pursue any removal of the wall or anything like that, we're outside the wetlands. We did comply with their notice of violation. And I think we've addressed almost everything. We also addressed the planning comments, which is in the staff report. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the commission? Chuck?
No, I'm good.
Just checking. And you're, yeah, reading the letter, I thought I had a copy with me, I seem to have misplaced it, but I would tend to agree with them that, thank you, removing the wall might cause more damage than leaving it?
Yeah, that's what I would tend to think too.
Keith, do you have any, would you like to comment on some of this?
No, I mean, that's, that's what they
Surprisingly.
At a minimum implied in the letter.
Yeah.
They don't come out and say it 100%, but that, you know, leaving it there might be the best course of action. And that's also what their enforcement people seem to come to the conclusion of too. You know, they're not making them remove the wall, they just wanted some verification that they removed some gravel in certain areas.
Which they've done.
Yeah, yeah. And our own enforcement was basically about getting permits, going through this process.
Right.
So it's not something where we are, you know, demanding that they remove the wall here.
Keith, in the second paragraph in DEEP's letter, they say that the violation has not been resolved, that they're a satisfaction. It appears that they're, they're just waiting for some verification that they have not yet received.
Right, right.
And the idea that their verification might be submitted and when this DEEP can notify us that the violation has been satisfied.
You know, Mr. Fettis said that he, he sent them the, what they were looking for, which was the pictures of the gravel being removed from the wetlands and so, you know, shouldn't be long until they
We had sent them earlier, we had sent them earlier and actually Jamie, and I hatchet her last name, but she actually sent them back to us and I think copied Keith. So I know she has them because she sent them back to us, but we sent them again today.
Okay.
Is it that she, they didn't satisfy her request?
Uh, that's not what she said. She said she was looking for photos. It was the area, it was the area along the driveway and she had, my client had sent a video of it and she had actually taken snapshots out of the video and sent them back to us. So I don't think that's the case. I think she might have, because it was back a month ago or so, and she may have just forgotten that she had them or misplaced them, so I just resent them again today.
But we think that's the verification they were looking for?
Yes.
I personally would feel better, I think, if the NOB had been satisfied, you know, notice of violation had been satisfied.
Before?
And before we act on it, the applicants indicated that they, maybe they can step up their efforts to get DEEP to send us some correspondence that, that the NOB is, did you get a formal NOB from DEEP?
Yes.
You did, okay. Yeah, I, I think
Do you want to ask for it?
React on it when they have clean hands and
Do you want to wait and keep, you're going to do an extension, Mr. Fettis?
Uh, yes, it was a notice of non-compliance, not a necessarily notice of violation.
And has that been met? We don't know yet. In writing?
According to her, according to today's DEEP letter, has not been met, so we think it has what she's looking for, we sent her a month ago or so plus, so. But again, I will
Let's see.
Perhaps give some correspondence back to us that your verification has been accepted and, and that no further action on their part is forthcoming.
Yep. I think that's fine. Do I need to write something down for the extension?
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Should we vote on the camera this evening, Keith?
Oh, no, it'll just be tabled until the next meeting.
Okay.
But is there a downside from your perspective?
No, because the work, again, we did the work before, that's why we're here, this is the work without a permit. We understand that.
The work's been done.
No, I totally understand, but I mean
And the site is stable and there's no
Yeah, there's not another application fee, there's nothing like that.
Right, it's just putting it off.
Okay.
All right.
So table, this would be table, that?
Right.
Is there a motion required to do that?
Uh, no, no.
Do you, do you want me to write something up or do you want to?
Yeah, that'd be
I think I'm fully on.
Thank you, Mr. Fettis. All right, is it getting warm in here or is it just me?
This one.
I don't want to have anybody fainting on us tonight. Maybe we could crack a door?
Open the door?
Yeah, that'd be great. So I guess we're ready to move on to the public hearing continuation of Mr. Ladizori in Perkins Farm. The, before we get into it, Mr. Ladizori has submitted some new material and this public comment period will reflect only comments on that new material as we stipulated at the end of the last hearing. So we will open the hearing and we have Ryan Deasy, myself, Ben Filbrick, Chuck Sheehan, Lynn Conway, Gary Belkey sitting in for Fred Dykman and Marge Salinger as our alternate. Is there a sign up sheet at the front of the room?
There is.
Great, so please sign up if you want to speak in favor, general comments or against this. And
Do you need me to say anything?
Do we need to have it all read back into the public record or can we just say continuation of last?
I don't think we do need to formally, I don't think we do need to formally read
You're spared, Lynn.
Are you sure?
We'll give you a break tonight. If it gets too cold, we'll close that. I just want to get a little fresh air. Thank you. All right, thank you, David. All yours.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission. I am David Ladizori, the owner of Ladizori Development and parcel is located at the Perkins Farm campus. I would say this is the X number of time I've been before you, but I have lost, officially lost count, so hopefully this goes well, we'll have one more shot and you'll hopefully never see me again. But before we begin tonight, I just wanted to take a few minutes to kind of summarize how we got to where we are today and as well as address some of the issues that came up at our last hearing. First, I just wanted to say that I, oops, hold on one second. Bear with me. First, I just wanted to say that I'm here before you again because we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We're really trying to build upon the previous success of our first few phases. At our last hearing, you heard from countless neighbors, residents, physicians, business owners, community leaders as to how the Perkins Farm campus has not only added value to their lives, but also to the Stonington community. And it's really not too surprising that there's been so much support for this project because it interweaves three really critical elements. And that is preservation, first-in-class medical care and quality housing, all on one campus. And it's been analogized a few times that this project is kind of like a three-legged stool and that if one of the legs fails, the rest of it goes down with it. And those three legs are those three elements. It's preservation, which has always been necessary to promote our environment and help buffer our neighbors. It's been state-of-the-art medical facility, which helps attract the best talent and staff to our community. And it also allows for high-quality housing, which has always been necessary to subsidize the high infrastructure costs, which were required to push the development along I-95 and preserve 50% of the property's open space. It's also acted and provided for housing for medical staff as well as patients who, and residents who want to be close to their doctors. And if one of these legs failed, really the whole thing would go down with it. Well, fortunately, that never happened. And what we instead discovered is that these three elements really created a community of like-minded young professionals and those who are young at heart, who want to work, live, play and age gracefully in the town of Stonington. And community is a word that I really want to stress because it came up a lot during the public comments section at our last hearing. And Commissioner Dykman actually asked, he said, how come you're asking for, you know, over 120 units and not 74 units? Well, the answer is very simple, is that we need that economy of scale to create an amenity-rich package, which allows for those community spaces for people to congregate and get to know each other. You actually heard in that last, in the presentation that came before, it's about the Crescent Club development, that they had around 70 multifamily units. And I just know that's not going to be successful, and obviously the developer did as well, because it didn't have those community spaces. Originally, the development, Harbor Heights Phase 1, was actually four buildings shaped in a circular configuration, which we unaffectionately refer to as a Texas donut, okay? The downside of that is there's no real community spaces because all the buildings are disjointed. You got to get outside, no one wants to go outside in the middle of the winter to access a club room. In addition, one of the buildings blacked off view of the open space. So at the time, Chairman Rathbun and all his wisdom said, why don't instead of three stories, you make it four stories? And what that allowed us to do was eliminate one entire building. It actually increased the open space and now we have it in a horseshoe shape, which has all the community spaces and the residences overlooking towards the open space. And that allowed us to create one kind of larger resort-style building, which had kind of every amenity that someone could hope for. One of the reasons why we won Apartment Community of the Year Award by the Connecticut Apartment Association is because we are the only 120-unit apartment complex in the state of Connecticut that has this amenity, that has this much of an amenity-rich package. Usually you don't see this. You see it when you have a couple hundred units. And what happens at that stage is, well, it's feasible because you're able to justify the costs, but then the community spaces get overrun and overused and they're not as personal. And so we kind of hit that right sweet spot. And I think you heard that from our residents, that what it has done is, it's, they're called community spaces for a reason, because they foster a sense of community. They increase the random interactions that you have in a hallway or in a club room or at the spa or at the gym that start with a friendly hello or a smile and lead to let's get lunch and hopefully a lasting friendship. And a lot of the people who are here today made those friendships at Harbor Heights. And we've even seen those same connections in that community being made at Hartford Healthcare, at the facility that we have now, where all the doctors are working in a coordinated care effort so that they're in a community of professionals that can give the best medical care to their patients. In addition, Chairman Filbrick asked the architect, how come the building, instead of focusing outwards, focused inwards? Well, the reason is simple, is that the building focuses inward to help promote a sense of community. Well, the reason is simple, is that the building focuses inward to help promote a sense of community, to create a sense of arrival, and to show people that are coming from all over the place, that they have landed in a destination for quality medical care. I was giving a tour of the facility today, and our radiology department is so overwhelmed, because we have the only 3T MRI machine in probably a 30, 40-minute drive. Our machine at the health center is more advanced than the one at Paks, so now they're running two shifts to keep that going. So, what's happened is, instead of just drawing from Stonington, because we have the most advanced technology in the region, we're getting people all the way from Norwich, from Lucasville, from Old Saybrook, and other areas on the western side of the Connecticut River. So it's important to have that kind of horseshoe shape again, so that people know that they're, they're at a medical academic campus. In addition, what that allows us to do is it highlights the courtyard area. And each building, the first phase and the second phase, the glass basades have telescoping doors, which allow for indoor-outdoor fairs. Now, we've never been able to have that because of COVID, but the idea was that we could have senior fairs, as well as health fairs, that people could engage with facility, uh, physicians, staff, patients, indoors and outdoors. Now, since our last hearing, we actually had our first public event at the health center. It served as the registration headquarters for the Mystic 10K. And it was really amazing to see hundreds and hundreds of people using this courtyard as how it was intended. And I think one of the highlights of this architecture, which was identified by Chairman Como of the ADRB, is that it really exemplifies civic architecture, and that it engages with the community. So if we focus that building out towards the highway, we kind of lose that character. So, at the end of the day, this project is about creating a sense of community. And this final phase is very similar to the first phase, because we want to build upon that community we've created by providing more medical, uh, options, as well as more diversity of housing options for our residents. And although I will admit that no project is perfect, uh, especially this one, we are still striving to do the best we can, and I hope tonight we can reasonably work together to address your outstanding concerns. This was actually, this south elevation was presented at the previous hearing, except my architect, uh, misidentified it as the south elevation, I believe. And it was mislabeled, but essentially, as you can see, this is the courtyard side of the, uh, building. It's essentially identical to Phase One, remember, this is just a concept, because it's a master plan, but we know it works, so we're not going to reinvent the wheel. The only real change here is that we moved all the community spaces to the center of the building, where you can see that storefront in the middle of the building, where originally we had a gym on the right wing. And that's actually one of our most desirable locations for a unit, because it's end of the building, it's a corner unit, it faces the open space, it's away from everyone, and it's more accessible to have all the community spaces close together in the center of the building. Uh, this was shown in the last hearing, this is what the first phase actually looks like. So it would be pretty much identical, except you'd have more community spaces in the middle. Uh, we have fire pits, uh, outdoor bar and grilling area, and these are used all the time. Uh, what's nice is none of the noise here impacts any of our neighbors, and this has really been kind of the most attractive units in our complex, surprisingly. And here is what it looks like, uh, at night. And you'll see from this, we have no lighting really on the building, so those are all just lights coming from the unit. Uh, I think Commissioner, um, Commissioner Conway brought up a great recommendation last time, which, uh, hold on, was to add a shoulder at the bottom of Jerry Brown Road. And actually, we had the perfect spot to do it, because as you can see, we're extending that stop bar 15 feet further downhill, and we're re-striping that line to the right, which is new, so we're creating a larger, um, turning radius that comes around, so now you have around 15 by 15 feet for pedestrians and cyclists to stop on the side.
So, so, I was confused by this drawing. The shoulder, the pedestrians would be inside of that shoulder?
Correct, right here.
To the right of the wall?
So what we've done is we've moved the stop bar 15 feet downhill.
Gotcha.
We have extended the stop bar over, so it can be utilized for vehicles, as well as pedestrians. We have also re-stripped this area, right now there's not a stripe there, which allows for an additional shoulder. So we're not really making any changes to the site work, but we're re-stripping it, because now we have the room, because we're 15 feet further in.
Perfect, thank you.
In addition, at this location, uh, and this was a suggestion of the, uh, police department a while back, but we've just decided to put it in, is we're doing a stop sign that will be lit up, it will flash, um, when people come to a stop sign, so each, um, corner of that stop sign has a red light, okay, and that's just to identify the people that they're coming to a stop sign.
Just on that downhill on Jerry Brown, not on the opposite side on Jerry Brown?
And that was a suggestion by the police department, and it's small money, and I have no problem doing that. In addition, it should be noted that there is a, uh, and it's not on this plan, but there is a light right here, which I'm actually reconfiguring that light, I put in the order three months ago, because of COVID, it's taken three months, but that will actually play out the light a little bit more, um, from the street lamp there, so there will be more light at this intersection. Um, and actually, that light will come out and will also encompass the, uh, shoulder pedestrian area. In addition, coming uphill, we have also moved that stop bar closer to the intersection to improve the sightlines. Um, that was at a recommendation, uh, of my traffic engineer, as well as the police department. But again, they see no issues with traffic at this intersection.
My opinion, that one could be moved quite a bit further southeast.
The main reason was, and my traffic engineer spoke about it last time, is that the, uh, the trucks had to make the turning radius. Um, so we were somewhat limited.
Yeah.
In addition, this was a suggestion by the police department, which was to put in, right before we got to the downhill section, to put in a radar sign, showing people how fast they're going, there's actually one on Pequod Seapost now, as well as all over the town, and it would just flash only, solar powered, only when, uh, vehicles go by, and that would just identify to people that there's a stop sign coming up, and they should slow down. Um, I will say that anecdotally, I feel traffic has slowed down, the speed of traffic quite a bit on this, because they, people did have to come to a stop. Where before, they used to have to go in really fast, and they'd catch speed going uphill, and I'm not saying they don't go slow on this road, but it has improved since, uh, the previous existing conditions.
I have a big favor to ask.
Yeah.
I've seen in some towns, when you're going at or below the speed limit, a thank you sign comes up, which I find nice, because I tend to obey the speed, and it's nice to be complimented that one is obeying the speed limit with a little courtesy. Is it possible to have that programmed in that sign?
It is.
Oh, boy, thank you.
You're welcome.
Cut peeve.
Um, it was mentioned by Commissioner Conway that there wasn't a photometric plan, um, in the application. It was included in the application materials, but, uh, it wasn't really presented at the presentation. We discussed the lighting that was being used, it's the same exact fixtures as before, there's absolutely no changes. As you can see, really, the, uh, the existing lighting is, is still being used, right? Except we're expanding the parking lot further to the east, but that same parking lot design is going over. I mean, the same lighting is continuing to the adjacent parking expansion, and there's very minimal light leakage, uh, out onto the adjacent parcel, but that's where the apartments are going to go, so it's not a major issue.
Along those lines, if I, if I may. So, I understand it's going to the east towards the current apartment building. Well, what about coming back towards the berm? Can you point how the additional lighting from that perspective, pointed out on the?
So if you look right here, that's actually where the berm is. And so we're going to be kind of taking away a little bit of the berm, and hiding in and tucking in this parking behind it. So you can see there's actually going to be lighting kind of going in here, and it's going to continue out to encompass this additional parking spaces. Now, we're, note from the last hearing that those southern parking spaces are in reserve. We may not build them. We feel there's a need for additional parking, we have those in reserve to build it, so the grading will, um, accommodate that. And we did that for the apartment building, we had spaces in reserve, which we ended up using.
So, I'm just trying to visualize this. The current berm, whether it was exactly the way it was approved to be, or whether it was modified in some way, just from a visual perspective, hides that parking lot, it basically hides the parking lot.
Correct.
You're going to be taking some of that berm away, and expanding it, and putting more lighting. What I want to know is what percentage of the berm, and will the berm continue just as effectively as it is today, with the additional spaces being requested, and the additional lighting being requested? Will the berm continue to hide the parking lot and the lighting?
It will. So much so, in fact, that it will hide the entire building. So, that building is much taller than the lighting. Even though we're eliminating 30 feet of the berm, um, it's still being hid by the rest of the berm. And as you'll see, as we'll get to in later slide, um, that berm has gone a long way towards actually hiding quite a bit of the building. So it will absolutely hide the lighting as well.
Okay, could you put trees on it?
We could, and, and we'll get into the berm a little bit later, um.
Again, because it's a, it's a country road, right? And, you know, the development is set back, there's no question the development's set back. Look over to the right to see it and everything, that's not, not really my concern nor my question. It's taking the top of that hill and making it into a 400-plus parking, space parking lot with lighting. And if the berm and plant, subsequent planting addresses that visually from anywhere on, uh, Jerry Brown Road, then it addresses it, and that's what I want to know.
Absolutely, it does address that. Um, as you'll see going by on the road currently, you cannot see a large portion of that parking. Now, the expansion is even further secluded, so you will not be able to see it even more, because it's further to the east. This is the most secluded section of the site, that's why we put in the berm. Now, I'm going to get to the next slides, and we'll talk a little bit more about your concerns.
Thank you.
So this here is a picture I took, um, right after our hearing. It is from Deer Ridge, and it looks across over at the existing healthcare facility. Now, this is a winter shot, during the summer, I had been up there, and you cannot see the building, but when all the leaves are down, at night, when the building is open, and this was taken when it's open, you can see a little bit of the building. But it should be noted that to the left here is the most vegetated area of, uh, this right here, of Deer Ridge, so it pretty much obscures almost all of Phase Two. This is a picture that was taken a little bit later, I had to lighten it up, because it is so dark over there. But you can see that when the building is off, you can't see it at all, and this again is a winter shot.
But you can see the big sign.
You can slightly see the sign through the vegetation.
Right, yeah, and I, I would like to note, I went down 95, uh, to New York City, and I saw several, um, Hartford Healthcare buildings along the highway. None of that, none of that had the signage that the current building does facing the highway.
And one of the reasons why this building has been so successful is because of that signage. So we've been able to attract the top talent to this facility, because they have made this a destination. And although we may not think that this is really off the beaten path, it is. A lot of those other buildings of Hartford Healthcare, which I'm very familiar with, like the one in Toys R Us, is easily visible, it's right off the highway. It's in a major kind of commercial area. So we had to create our own critical mass to get people there, and like I said, because this is almost all specialists, and the second phase will have even more specialists, um, that signage was important, but that was approved by this commission. So I'd like to focus more on the second phase, and if we look at the building here, it is, you know, 800 feet, a little bit more than 800 feet, away from three neighbors on the cross of one of the largest highways in the country. There is three 150-foot medians of vegetation that go across to help obscure the view. Now, I'm not saying that a section of the first building is not visible during the winter, during open hours, but, you know, I was over there at night, and there's a lot of cars that go by, and it's, the light pollution is coming not from the building, it's coming from 50,000 cars that go by every day, actually 52,000 cars that go by. And there's actually more cars that go by, um, I-95 south than I-95 north, because they're heading down towards New Haven and New York. So the traffic, the traffic impacts, and the noise impacts are actually greater on that side. When you look at where the second phase of the apartments will go, there's really no, um, house right across from it, so there's no house that looks directly at it, and it is in the most vegetated area of the site, and because the building is pushed back a little bit more, it'll be even more obscured. So here kind of goes to your question about how effective is that berm? So right now, we are at the entrance of Stone Ridge. This is taken during the winter, so, you know, you can see everything. And as you'll see, the berm height is almost level with the roof line of the building. It should be noted that the berm, I'm allowed to, uh, build up to 16 feet, but this berm, the highest elevation is 13 feet. It's actually three feet less. And as you'll see in later slides, we did, it did get built over a little bit more towards the west, to even out some of those grades. But on the next slide, you'll actually see that it worked to actually obscure more of Phase Two, so I'll get into that in a little bit. And so when I was at Jerry Brown Road, taking a photograph of the health center, I'm not saying you can't see it, because it is 700 feet away, you have to really look for it. I said, where is this light pollution coming from? Well, it was coming behind me from Stone Ridge. And the reason is, is because they're built 50 feet off the road. A lot of that lighting was designed, you know, 15 years ago, so it doesn't have as much downward casting lighting as what we have on our site. So it really is a major impact, and it's Stone Ridge that has maintained the character, uh, changed the character of Jerry Brown Road. I used to have pumpkins that I grew, 50 by 50 pumpkin patch behind those farmhouse. And I would sell them and get corn stocks and put them on the farmhouse, and I made quite a bit of money when I was 15. And I'd do that before going to work at Abbott's. And I was so successful, I expanded it, but at that time, Stone Ridge wasn't there, we bought this, and it was totally dark at night. We would go into that house and have some fun, and when, after Stone Ridge came in, it was so bright, it, it really changed the whole neighborhood. Uh, I don't think our development has done that, because we've pushed it against the highway.
We learn by our mistakes.
But Stone Ridge has created a lot of value to this community, and we wouldn't be here where we are today, and we wouldn't have the patience to support the health center if not for Stone Ridge. And they've also generated a lot to our grant list. So here's an example of what the current growth is, and we actually use the same type of pine trees that Stone Ridge planted. They came in at the same height as what Stone Ridge planted, and now, as you can see across the street, a lot of those trees are now 40 feet tall. And you can see the building that we've kind of added in, and this is from the most visible section of the site. In addition, because we're eliminating the emergency access corridor, we've been able to replant, and we've graphically showed it in here, what it looks like to have this whole area green. Now, my guys are cutting it a little too short, and it really should be 18 to 24 inches, the meadow areas, um, and that's what we're going to be doing going forward. And when we add in a few more trees, which we've done kind of further downhill, we can do here as well, at five-year growth, you know, it obscures the building quite a bit more. Uh, these trees do grow three to four feet every year. And eventually, 10-year growth, it obscures most of the building, as you've seen with Stone Ridge across the street. Now, this is a little difficult to see here, but you can see it on the plans that we've sent over. Now, the berm has expanded slightly to the west, which my civil engineer will address, but it has cut off around three-quarters of that building. And because the height line just happens to line up with the height, it really does obscure almost a majority of that building and the massing. And if you were to look across from here, which is really the only residence across from here, the parking area is hidden behind here where that lighting is that you were concerned about. So, you can see it here, it will be more. So you can see it here. It will be more hidden than the first phase. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to my civil engineer to address the berm.
I do just want to compliment you on the stone wall.
You're welcome.
You did a really nice job.
And hopefully, we can continue that once we eliminate the emergency corridor. I got to work the place department.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Todd Ritchie, professional engineer with SLR. At the last hearing meeting, there were some questions about the existing berm, where its location is, and how it compares to the approved, previously approved location. For the sake of time and to expedite the process of getting that information, we realized that the surveyor wouldn't be able to get out there to fully survey the berm. We didn't, our company didn't do the original survey. So we took it upon ourselves to get as much information as engineers that, using the tools that we have to take field measurements. So we went out with the GPS unit to locate the top and the bottom of the berm all the way around. As you can see there, the two dark dashed lines. And then we also took out a builder's level to get the slope distances around there at all locations, as you see. And then we also have a drone, so we were able to fly that drone and get an aerial image on that date as you, on the plan that shows the exact conditions of the berm today. So with all that information, we were able to also superimpose a previously approved plan onto this plan on the right-hand side that shows the previously approved berm location and grading. All of the previously approved grading was three-to-one slope and in that general location. It was called out as a soil stockpile area. I was involved in the project at that time. I don't know if it, what the, I don't know if the permanent intent was of that area, whether it was fully temporary or... But we can all acknowledge that, you know, everybody likes the fact that it's there. And as you can see with the location, it is vegetated. As shown in the photo, there's, all the slopes are stable with vegetation. It has a flattish top to it. There's a little bit of a peak, as shown in the actual survey contours towards the north. So it's a little bit higher. As David indicated, it's a few feet lower than was originally approved. I believe it was sixteen feet previously approved. And I can't quite see it on here, and I can't see it over there either. But it's written on the plan. I think it's a three-foot difference. So technically, if, you know, he could raise it three more feet if that's what somebody would like for even more visual impact. But it is, as you can see, you know, nothing's perfect when you're placing material. It's close to the location, very close, slightly west. And the steeper slopes are to the west as not to further intrude westward, which are two-to-one slopes. Again, all the slopes are stabilized with vegetation. If you have any questions, but that's the information that we were able to provide for that.
Any questions?
Have you seen the report that was written by Collin Eco Design LLC with regard to revegetation and stability of the berm?
I did not see that prior to coming tonight.
Okay. Well, just to paraphrase it, it says it's stable even though the slopes are two-to-one. And it's recommending that it, the invasive speed control. This is again, just paraphrase.
Yes.
An invasive speed control and that it be reseeded. Are you in concurrence with that?
Yes. It is, it is stable. It could use denser vegetation for her. As far as, there's some rocky, you know, some rockiness to it from some molders. So it would be nice over time as, as you have the ability to reseed and overseed to get... We, I think there was some concern about not doing a cutting because of some of the species that's on there now because there's, they're actually germinating. And they didn't want to spread some of that that could be invasive that they're trying to keep under control. So with that, there's certainly the invasive specialists that's going to be involved in eradicating whatever might be there that shouldn't be. And then over time, making it more and more dense of a stand of vegetation.
Okay, so I, that was a rather lengthy answer. In your opinion, as an engineer, is it stable?
Yes. I didn't, I did not witness any erosion that has resulted in migration of soil material.
Okay, so the side slopes, as they exist today, it's stable based on the GIS survey that you presented?
Yes, and field observations, of course. We walked around the perimeter.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And if you made it three feet higher, would it be just as, you could make it just as stable?
Yes.
Oh, sure. This is a plan that we included as a potential, if desired, to expand the berm. David would be willing to lengthen it along Jerry Brown Road to further provide screening. I think as Commissioner Conway had mentioned, there's not so much a concern about removing, removing portion of the berm to the north because you're obviously looking in that direction. But certainly, something like this would, would add a lot more visual screen.
I think that's a great idea.
How high are you proposing that section to be?
I would say to match existing, if not a few feet higher, as was previously approved.
Would that approach on any additional wetlands?
That is actually outside the, as shown is outside the one hundred.
That's the wetlands border on that plan right there?
Correct. It's a little bit light, but if I may, it's right here. That's a hundred feet. Oops. It's a hundred feet right here, this line. Yeah, yes.
Would that be within the wetland standoff distance? Would you have to go back to wetlands for that?
No, because it's outside the hundred. Upland review areas for regulated area for wetlands is a hundred feet, and that's the, it's beyond the hundred feet.
Okay, so you're, you're at least a hundred feet away from the water?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you. That was a great response on that question, by the way. We, we had raised this only last week and in a short, or a couple of weeks ago. That short period of time, this is a very detailed plan to have done a survey and, and put together these details. Very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to give a little history of how we got here. I think I mentioned before that this project was pretty much unfinancable. And I had to be very creative with the financing. And even then, I had to use, you know, some low-ball contractors to make the numbers work. That was the only way to make it work. And unfortunately, our site contractor went belly up, particularly during COVID. And so he did not finish the berm, which is why it was unpresentable for a while. The other issue was, is because the construction period took so long, we had seeded it in multiple occasions. It's actually been seeded for separate occasions, which is noted in that report that you brought up, Commissioner Sheehan. And the issue is, is that when we did this, we had one of the biggest droughts on record. And my entire site was not in good shape. So nothing really took. So what I did is I made a deal with E.G. Holmes, actually, who was up here before, and his site contractor to come back and reshape those berms to soften some of the grading to the, to the west. And that's why I pushed over a little bit more to the west. It was seeded with the same seed mix. I did not cut it because I followed the advice of my soil scientist, Jim Cowan, who wanted it to grow in a little bit more before we did our first cutting. And then the issue is that mugwort, an invasive species, came in. And now I can't cut it because it's currently germinating. The entire site I've been using, all habitat, which is an invasive species company to come in and treat all this. But that stuff came in very quick. And I had my guy just about ready to go out and cut it, and I was told not to. So that's something that we will be cutting. We will be treating it. But the idea with the berm expansion is that we can pretty much hide almost all the apartments. And it really makes that area totally secluded. And if we go back in, enlarge it, and I can soften the grades, and I can make it a little more conducive with the surrounding habitat. The idea was to never really put vegetation in there, plantings in there because it was supposed to be a fescue mix. It was supposed to be a natural pollinator habitat that was supposed to mimic the existing meadow next door. So I'll admit, it doesn't look good. And what you see coming up now is the rye, right? And that's for stabilization, so it is stable. But it takes a cold snap for everything else to go through because we just planted it. It's going to take time. So the moral of the story is, we can build buildings really quick, but it takes a little longer for the plantings to come in. So if I can extend that over, I don't think we have to go higher. I'll leave that to your discretion. I think it'll go a long way to eliminating all sightlines, especially from peak watch seapost of the apartments. And so that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
I have a question for you, David. Is, any update on the land conservation?
No, I haven't had those conversations, so I'm waiting to hear what happens here. But, you know, the one option too, just like was presented in the previous presentation, is that we could always deed it to the town if the land trust doesn't take it. And I'm amenable to that.
Okay. Is your presentation completed?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the audience who would like to speak in favor of this? Or, excuse me, Mr. Attorney, Ladwood, did you have any input at this thing? Or, okay, thank you. Thank you, Keith. Okay, we have Rick Newton for general comments is the only submittal.
Rick Newton, Network Lane Mystic. You touched on what I was going to ask right at the very end about the conservation of the property. It was noted in the, in the planner's report that it did go to the Conservation Commission, so that gets considered new information. The Conservation Commission, in their minutes, stated that land trusts don't typically take this type of open space. There's too much development in the open space. And so if they can't find a land trust to take it, what's going to happen to the property? Are they just going to dump it on the town? Is the town going to take care of it? I mean, you know, the town doesn't look at their conservation easements that they own now. And taking on another one just doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Thank you. Any other comments proposed? General comments already. Would you like to have a rebuttal to that? Thank you. Keith? You're on.
Well, as was discussed at the last meeting, you know, this application pretty much represents three things. You know, the first is the zoning regulation amendment, where they're asking to change the language of the zoning regulations to allow the additional residential density in the Greenway Development District. And the requested apartment building depends on that. So if you say no to the zoning regulation amendment, then you'll have to say no to the apartment building because it would have to be limited to, I think it's just seventy-four units. The other thing is the master, excuse me, the master plan amendment, which is to modify the already approved master plan for the second apartment building and the extension of the Hartford Healthcare. The third is the site plan application, which really just covers Hartford Healthcare's end of it. That's why Hartford Healthcare is a lot more detailed than its planning because once that's approved, they can get a building permit to build Hartford Healthcare. The apartments will have to come back to you as a site plan application in the future with more information on the engineering details.
Keith, in the required actions that are listed in the report, it's also listed that a decision on conformance with the plan of conservation and development, conservation and development comprehensive plan is also required. Is there a motion that's required on that as well?
Yeah, there should be a motion on that. Just because when you're making a decision on a zoning regulation amendment or a zoning map amendment, state statutes say you're supposed to vote on that also.
Can any of the motions be combined, or do they have to be individual motions?
I think they can be combined. There's so many steps to this that some of them make sense to do separately.
I have five votes. One, two, three, four.
Yeah, I have five.
It would be four, four motions. A decision on conformance with the plan of conservation and development, decision on the zoning regulation amendment, decision on the master plan and the zone change waiver request, and a decision on the master plan zone change application.
Yeah, and also a decision on the site plan application for Hartford Healthcare.
Do we have the site plan in front of us right now?
You do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the...
I thought you said that had to come back to us.
No, that's, that's for the apartment building. Because the apartment building is...
Okay.
Yeah, just more conceptual at this point.
Got it. Okay.
Keith, I, I just have a question. So the zoning text amendment, this whole development is under the master plan plan. It's so, under the master plan, we can do whatever we want. And we can just say that we can increase the allowable units per acre for this, for this development, for Perkins Farm Development. So why are we saying that we want a zoning text that could affect other, other developments? We, we can just say, hey, for Perkins Farm, for this development as presented, because we handle master plans on a per-plan basis, we're going to allow the increased density. And therefore, you know, we're, we're allowing what has been requested for this master plan. Why do we have to have it be a zoning text change that could affect other parts of, of the community?
They really can't get there without it because the, the way the zoning regulation is written, that subzone, that residential part of this, you can only get twelve units per acre of the subzone. And they're looking for fifteen units per acre.
I, I understand, but with the master plan concept, we actually don't have to follow any of ours.
There, there are density limits written into it. When the GDD was, was drafted by the applicants, there was that upper limit. So we couldn't approve, you know, a thousand units there because it would run up against that ceiling. So that's why they need to change the, the rules of the, of the regulation in order to get that far. And the way, the way it's written, if it was age-targeted housing, they could go up to fifteen units per acre. But because it's not, it's stuck at twelve, so they need that relief there to change that rule. And as far as other locations, the GDD, it's, it's really limited in where it could be used. When the zoning regulation was, was approved, we look at where it could be. And there's basically like one, realistically, one other property where it might be used, which was a farm near the transfer station. Also Spellman Park, which wouldn't happen. But unlike some other zones, it's a few and far between where it could be used here.
Okay, it's, it's limited to those two?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thanks for clarifying. Because I, I'm in, in favor of the increased density for this project. I just was looking at a way that we could be very specific. Yep.
Keith, last meeting, a citizen came up and wanted to have us implement dust control, which I think the applicant said they'd be willing to do. Would that be in the site plan for Hartford Healthcare?
It would be, and it is, it is covered, really. I mean, there is a section of zoning, talks about construction standards and dust control. It overlooks about the things, calcium chloride that Mr. Sheehan mentioned. There is an ENS plan as part of their plans too, which, which addresses that.
Okay.
So it's something that is covered if we, if we see that as an issue.
Thank you.
In short, the long staff report, the zoning regulations talk about feasibility, that we're supposed to do this big report on whether the... that we're supposed to do this big report on whether the project is feasible, looks at all these individual issues like utilities, environmental issues. You know, our analysis is, it's feasible on all those counts. You know, the one thing we're going into it maybe seemed a little dicey was the sewer capacity with the Mystic Moratorium. But the comments we got back from the WPCA did indicate that they were very hopeful that the capacity could be there soon. And as you may have read, they did find a large source of the INI with that pipe that was just taking in water from the river, which can hopefully be addressed soon. To jump to the recommended stipulations for this, you know, I broke them down into ones for the master plan approval and the site plan approval. And I think everyone's seen them. I don't have anything in there about the berm because I didn't know where that would go tonight. So I don't know if the commission wanted to add something. The commission did like the idea of the berm stretching horizontally along the road there.
Yeah, as proposed.
As proposed, yeah.
You like that idea?
Yeah. Increase it to the original 16.
I have no objection to that. I think what's important is that the recommendations of the.
Soil scientist.
Cohen Eco Design LLC incorporated as a stipulation, specifically recommends that the invasions, the dead stands and invasions along the eastern and western slopes, you know, nearest the road, nearest the building, be treated and that the areas be reseeded. And I don't think the applicant objects to that. He doesn't, so, you know, I'm satisfied with that. And I think they'd have to come back with a modified grading plan if they were going to change the size of the berm. So I think that would have to come back to us. Because there'd be different sedimentation and erosion control. And I think SLR would want to take a look at slopes and things of that nature to make sure that the wetlands, which are not immediately adjacent to, but could be impacted if it weren't handled properly with the right sedimentation, erosion control. So, well, I think it's a great idea to extend it. If, you know, there's some engineering that isn't done, that would have to be done to do that, so.
But could we stay at the, to request that, but have it be approved by the town engineer and not have to come back?
Sure, I'm fine, I'm fine with.
You know, not to hold anything on, but that kind of dots the i's and crosses the t's.
Yeah, it's fine by me.
Yeah, I don't object to that at all.
Yeah.
Not at all. Keith, the these recommended stipulations, again, to go back to, I'm sorry to belabor this, but I, you know, I think it's just as important that we don't make an administrative error in approving this application. And yet they have another meeting to come back to. So there's really five motions here. First is plan of conservation and development. Second is the zoning text amendment. The third is the decision on the master plan zone change waiver request. Fourth is the decision on the master plan zone change application. The fifth is the site plan. Should the stipulations apply to each one of these?
I think just the last two, the master plan and the site plan.
Okay, fine. Right, so the first three motions could stand on their own with no stipulations. And the last two would have the stipulations with the added stipulations that we just mentioned on the berm.
Right, right.
The Cohen Eco Design memo and the stipulation about the extension of the berm subject to staff.
Right, and wasn't there another stipulation that we put on last meeting about signage? That we would take that separate because it had been.
Yeah, and that is on there. Yeah, number seven, signage details for Hartford Healthcare shall be provided and reviewed by the commission as an administrative review item.
Yeah.
And where do all the town engineers' comments go? Which vote would that be on? He had eight, I think.
For the berm?
No, I think they were just.
The general town engineer view was site plan approval number three.
Okay, that's where I have them, okay. Any other questions for Keith? Or Keith, do you have any more comments?
No, I don't. I think I just wanted to write down Mr. Sheehan's recommendation for Mr. Cohen's comments. Incorporate recommendations. Mr. Cohen's. Letter dated, whatever it stated.
So Gary and Marge, you have any other questions or input? Is that it? Okay.
This is a relatively closed public hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Motion, make a motion.
Bring them on, boys.
Okay, first one, to approve the zoning regulation text amendment change to increase, I think it's to 15.
I think the first one is the decision on the plan of conservation and development on page 55 of the staff report.
Okay. So first, make a motion to approve the conservation and development plan as stipulated.
Second.
Discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who is opposed?
Now, to make the motion to approve the zoning regulation text amendment change to allow the increase in units to 15 per acre.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move.
See the next one. I think we have the master plan amendment to approve that with the outlined stipulations. The Keith's already noted, and the Cohen ecosystem stipulation that Chuck added.
And.
And the berm.
I think we would do the waivers on that too.
Okay, so add that to the, and to include the waivers for the berm extension to be approved by the town engineer.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
This one should be the final one for the, make a motion to approve the site plan for the Hartford Healthcare portion of this with the outlined stipulations from Keith. And I think also to include the stipulation with regard to signage.
Let's see. So the signage one was on there, but we also talked about the berm extension.
I thought we just took.
Being approved by the town engineer and the implementing the recommendations in the letter from Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I thought we got, we covered those. Do we need to do those for both?
Well, I think there's a little confusion. I think sequentially, we need to do the master plan zone change amendment. You jumped one, so I think we need to withdraw that motion on the site plan.
Okay.
There were a total of five votes.
Right, right.
So we're on number four.
Right.
The master plan zone.
Okay, we've got conversations, okay. So which is the next one that we need to do then?
Zone change amendment.
Zone change amendment, that's one.
Correct, Keith?
Zone change application, master plan amendment.
Yeah, I think, I thought we did the master plan and we combined it with the waivers, which is.
All right.
I don't think we did the zone change application.
Yes, we did.
We did the text amendment.
Yeah.
We did that. We didn't do the zone change application.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we did that and the master, because that and the master plan.
Okay, then, just take a look at page 55, the top of page 55. Look at the order of those motions. Just make sure that we've got everything. If we leave number four on the list out, that we, because it almost appears that number three and number four are duplicative.
Yeah, number three was the waivers associated with the master plan. Number four was the master plan itself. And the motion combined both of them.
Yeah, okay, yeah. All right, so we're good then if we leave number four out.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all in agreement, three and four were combined in our last vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good job, Ryan.
Very good job.
So back to the final one.
The final one is the site plan, yeah, for the Hartford Healthcare portion with the stipulation on the signage.
I think there's a series.
And other stipulations that Keith had added, including the signage stipulation.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So order.
Oh, and the effective date of the.
Oh, sure.
Effective date of the changes is December 27th.
While we're all still here, so it doesn't look like there's anything on the docket for our next meeting, the 21st?
Uh, no, no.
So we will cancel the meeting on the 21st.
Merciful.
Merciful. I hear a motion on this meeting.
Make a motion to close the meeting?
All those in favor?
Aye.